Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' BOCC meeting for Tuesday, April the 2nd, 2019. I'm Board Chair John Hutchings. To my left is Vice Chair Gary Edwards. To my left. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is the Clerk of the Board, La Bonita Bomar. And to her right, over on the bench, is County Manager Rivera Chavez. To his right, in the middle there, is Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager and Finance Director. And to her right is Elizabeth Petrich, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney. So, welcome. And with that, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll turn to Commissioner Gary Edwards.
And if you'll join me, I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, the meeting is called to order. And looking for approval of today's agenda.
I would make a motion to approve Tuesday's April 2nd, 2019, agenda. Second?
We moved to second. Any additions or deletions?
No.
To the agenda? No? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously. Approval of the Board and meeting minutes from March 5th.
I would move to approve the Board meeting minutes from March 5th, 2019. Second?
Moved to second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. That takes us to Presentations. And the first one is the Presentation for the National Service Recognition Day Proclamation. County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. With us, we have representatives from the United Ways of Thurston County. May I ask them to come forward and introduce themselves? And I'm sure you have a presentation related to this proclamation.
Hello. My name is Paul Larson. I'm the Director of Community Impact for United Way of Thurston County. So, we'd first like to thank Thurston County for recognizing National Day of Service Recognition Day. Our United Way runs two programs for the Corporation for National Community Service. Those programs are the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, known as RSVP, and our Volunteers in Service to America, known as VISTA. I'll briefly speak about RSVP, and then I'm going to introduce our VISTA leader, Ryan Cole, to speak about VISTA. Our RSVP program currently has 206 active volunteers in Thurston County. We have 33 volunteers serving at the Thurston County Food Bank, and 33 volunteers serving at Providence Sound Home Care and Hospice, Senior Services for South Sound, and Together. We have an additional 140 RSVP members who serve as reading buddies at 26 schools and six school districts in Thurston County. Reading buddies are volunteers that volunteer one hour a week to read to a child who's struggling to read at grade level. Studies have shown that when students are not reading at grade level by third grade, they are four times more likely not to graduate on time or at all. We have another RSVP member at our own United Way. Kathy King has been volunteering at United Way for 11 years. During the time, she has served over 4,000 hours as a volunteer. Now, according to Independentssector.org, that's an equivalent of over $110,000 of service time. I wish she could be here today, but she's actually taken the week off to be with her grandchildren.
That's horrible.
I would now like to introduce Ryan Cole, VISTA leader for United Way of Thurston County.
Thanks, Paul. And thanks, everyone. So, just to give you an idea of what our VISTA team does, we have 16 volunteers across two counties right now, Pearson and Thurston. We pulled some data from our Thurston County Volunteers, our Thurston County Vistas. This is from September through February. So far this year, our Vistas have recruited and managed over 300 community volunteers. Those volunteers have performed over 1,100 hours of service. The dollar value of cash and in-kind donations leveraged by our Vistas is over $11,000. And so far, we have helped over 130 adults with opioid prevention treatment or post-treatment. In fact, one of our Vistas just helped to start a Butte clinic at Capital Recovery Center downtown. And quickly, I'd love to share a story of service from one of our volunteers. She couldn't be here with us today, but her name is Sarah. She serves at Together. And Sarah says, "In my first three months of VISTA service, I have gained a wealth of knowledge about the field of volunteer management. Favorite projects so far have included starting a volunteer newsletter, compiling the compelling stories of former and current volunteers, and streamlining the volunteer recruitment system. I also expanded our volunteer onboarding and training system, creating an agency orientation so that volunteers feel more connected to Together as a whole. I highly recommend VISTA for anyone interested in a career in the nonprofit sector. The skills you build, the relationships you form, and most importantly, the causes you are able to support during your VISTA year make for a rewarding experience." Thank you.
Beautiful. Now, we have a proclamation. Do we have any comments to make first? Oh? Okay.
Whereas Thurston County recognizes service to others as a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties are increasingly turning to volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainability, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages resources to strengthen community impacts and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families, and whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 2nd, 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2nd, 2019, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourages all residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our communities, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Adopted the second day of April, 2019, signed by the Board of County Commissioners."
Yeah. And in the proclamation, it says, you know, "We recognize it, but we have no idea what the impact is monetarily because it's so huge and immense. And my wife and I volunteered, so our kids grew up with that. Now, they're volunteering. These guys, I'm sure, have volunteered. And you have volunteered. You just mentor, and it spreads and spreads. And volunteers are immeasurable and invaluable. So, thank you very much for that." We have a proclamation for you. And let's get a picture taken, right up front here. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Paul.
Paul, thanks for coming over, and thanks for what you do. Thank you.
Good job being to see you again. You're very welcome. Who is going to get this? Who's going to receive it?
That's not right.
There we go. Wait a minute. I want my tether showing. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we have, oh, yeah, we have another proclamation. National Equal Pay Day.
Yes, and we have representatives from the YWCA, and I will ask them to please come to the podium, introduce yourselves, and tell us more about this proclamation.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Hutchings, Edwards, and Mensah, Thurston County staff, community members, and visitors. My name's Hillary Dedamore, and I'm the CEO at the YWCA of Olympia, which has the mission to eliminate racism and empower women. And I'm joined here today with two longtime volunteers of the YWCA who also serve on our advocacy committee.
Hi, I'm Heather Grove. I was here last year. I'm also a professor at St. Martin's University in Economics, so I've helped to put together some of the facts and figures and so on that you'll hear today.
Go Saints!
And I'm Gail Wooton. I work in the field of higher ed, and I was actually an AmeriCorps member way back in the day, so that was great to hear that today is National Service Day.
So was I. Great.
So, I'm here today, again, on behalf of the YWCA of Olympia, and the Xonta Club of Olympia, Ser Optimists of Olympia, Women United of Thurston County, and the Inter-Agency Committee of State-Employed Women. And we're delighted to be here to recognize Equal Pay Day, which is April 2nd this year. And we want to sincerely thank Thurston County for recognizing this important day through a county proclamation, and for making pay equity a public priority, including launching some pilot projects, like a Bring Your Infant to Work pilot that was launched at the Thurston County Department of Public Health and Social Services. And it sounds like we might have one of those babies here today, so that's great. Equal Pay Day, as you might know, is the symbolic day when women's earnings, which are 80% of men's nationally, finally catch up to men's earnings from the previous year. So, in other words, women have to work an additional three months and several extra days on top of that to earn the same wages as their male counterparts. So, the wage gap still exists. Women hold almost half of all jobs and earn the majority of college degrees, yet the typical woman working full-time in Washington earns only roughly 78 cents to a man's dollar. So, the Equal Pay Act was passed over 50 years ago, but women, and especially women of color, continue to suffer the consequences of equal pay. Asian women working full-time make 80 cents for every dollar paid to their white, non-Hispanic male counterparts. White women make 75% of white male earnings nationally. Black and African-American women make 62%. Hispanic and Latina women make 48%. Native Hawaiian and women that are Pacific Islanders make 51%. Native American women make 63%. So, this means that their Equal Pay Day is not April 2nd, today, but it's actually in November. So, to make the same earnings, some women of color must work one year plus 10 months and several extra days on top of that to make what their white male counterparts made the previous year. So, in other words, Equal Pay Day is really Equal Pay Year, or Unequal Pay Year. So, why do we care? A lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in Social Security or pension benefits formula. Four in 10 mothers are the main source of income for their families, and nearly two-thirds are the primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security. These individuals are not only impacted by the gender wage gap, but also what's called the motherhood penalty, with mothers overall earning 69% of what fathers earn overall. Unequal pay hits families in the pocketbook and slows down our economy. The average Washington woman working full-time brings home almost $14,000 less each year than the average man. That keeps families strapped, reduces spending in local businesses in Thurston County, and could help explain why close to 20% of our state's children live in poverty. It also limits women's ability to invest in education or start a business, and results in less retirement income and expenditures. So, the pay gap isn't simply a national issue. It affects us here in Thurston County as well. Thurston County gender differences echo the national and state data, with some estimates ranging from 78 to 82 cents for every dollar a man earns. So, this is a significant long-term problem for our community. It has direct consequences for the Thurston County labor market, our regional economy, and our quality of life, and it conflicts with our mission and values of social equity, inclusion, and fairness. So, an Equal Pay Day proclamation is a good first step to acknowledging that unequal pay continues to be a challenge facing women, particularly women of color in our community, and things like Bring Your Infant to Work policies, again, are a good first step. We know it's going to take all organizations and clubs, municipalities, and businesses, though, to bring about workplace and pay equity with sort of tangible and concrete policies and practices that prove that they're making a difference with reducing the local wage gap here in Thurston County. So, today, we thank Thurston County and invite you to continue to work towards pay equity for all, and by doing so, you'll strengthen the economy and the economic status and stability of all women, men, children, and families who call Thurston County their home. Thank you.
Heather, Gail, are you going to speak? Nope. Okay.
Nothing else to add.
A small intermission. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah. Hillary was asking if I could explain a little bit what the actual wage gap means. And, yeah, and it's a good question. Oftentimes, I think it's easy for people to dismiss unequal pay because they think, well, women are at home with their families, which is oftentimes the case. But increasingly, men are home as well, and so the more that we can have family leave policies and so on to support men and women, I think, is helpful. But back to the wage gap, basically, what we do is we look at the number of people who are employed. We look at those who are employed and those who are not employed. So, actually, there are some questions sometimes about whether you include the people who are not employed, because you add in a lot of zeros that way, except for their volunteer work, which isn't counted monetarily. And so, when you look at it that way, it looks a lot lower, of course. But most of the studies that we've been referring to have actually been looking at people equalizing full-time pay. You might also think that there's also, you know, people in male-dominated jobs get paid more, which is oftentimes true. But even when you control for occupation, in other words, you're looking at occupations, and you're looking at male and female differences, those gender gaps in pay still persist. So, it is still very much a problem with women getting access to high-paid jobs. But even within those categories, what doesn't, we still see that, those kinds of differences. So, you know, speaking from my own experience in the work world and as a labor economist, I think that one thing that could help is a lot of transparency. In terms of pay, I know that, at least in my current job, I would not be able to know what my male counterparts are making relative to me, unless I really press them. So, there are some policies that many municipalities and states are trying to put in place, which is to have people divulge what their male and female difference in salaries are. And that certainly helps people to be able to point out what some of the challenges could be. So, I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Gail was kind enough to take some time to come and spend time to give me an overview of this issue and talk to me about the Workplace Equity Initiative, which has 33 strategies that employers can take, so I'd encourage employers to take a look at that. We took a look at it. I shared it with my colleagues, and we discussed things that we might be able to do that we're not already doing in Thurston County. I was particularly interested in some of the implicit bias training with regard to hiring as being something important that we could maybe talk further about. So, thank you for that time you spent, and hopefully, we'll be moving forward in Thurston County.
I think we hope that you think we're headed in the right direction.
What do you think?
I think we're headed in the right direction. But you would have a more valid critique of that possibly, though. So, we'd like to hear it.
Right now?
Oh, no. Maybe not right now. We've got a few proclamations to go over, but we value your input. Let's just put it that way.
Now, over the decades, my wife has been the victim of that, pay inequity, but not currently, because she runs a hobby farm. Maybe you don't get paid for that. But my son, disabled veteran, is a stay-at-home dad, and his wife is now working full-time for a school district locally. And I kind of turn a scant eye and wonder, because I can't press the other people. You're getting paid, you know, male or other, you know, factors. But I'm dubious, but I'm not a conspiracy theorist. But it is a critical issue, and I talked with, you and I, Hillary talked about this a couple weeks ago, and I've talked with the County Manager and Assistant County Manager. What are we doing? What are we not doing? What can we do? Just along the same lines as what Commissioner Mensah said with the YWCA flyer. It's important to us, and we do care. And we do everything we can to make strides towards that end, so that's not an issue with the county. And I'm not sure it is an issue with the county, but I just want to be sure.
I just have one thing to say, and the more that you, as a county, do to take on efforts such as those listed in the Equity Initiative that we put forward, the more you influence others out there, whether it's businesses, other cities in the county. So, being a leader in this, I think, would be something that I would challenge you to take on, and others will follow, because it's a systemic issue that's only going to be solved if more and more people join the ranks. So, thank you.
I agree with you, Gail, especially if a white guy stands up and says it needs to be addressed. Yeah. Thank you. So, we have a proclamation to read.
National Equal Pay Day. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minorities, continue to suffer the consequences of unequal pay. And whereas, according to an analysis by the National Women's Law Center in 2018, full-time, year-round working women earned only 78% of the earnings of full-time, year-round working men in Washington State, indicating little change or progress in pay equity. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the median income of single women in Thurston County was $37,000, and $27,000 for single mothers compared to $47,000 and $48,000 for single men and single fathers. Whereas wage gaps by gender, race, ethnicity, parental status persists in Washington State. And whereas, according to research by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap of 82% is evident in just one year after college graduation. Even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings, such as occupation hours worked and college major, a college-educated woman will earn around $1 million less than a man with the same degree over the course of a career. And whereas, a lifetime of lower pay results in less income to save for retirement and less income counted in a Social Security or pension benefit formula, and whereas pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors, and whereas the Equal Pay Opportunity Act of Washington State was enacted in 2018, which requires employers to provide equal pay and career advancement opportunities to their employees regardless of gender, and whereas Tuesday, April 2nd, symbolizes the time in 2019 when the wages paid to women catch up with the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2nd, 2019, as National Equal Pay Day and recognize the full value of women's contributions to the labor force. Adopted this second day of April, 2019, Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah. And now, we have a proclamation to present, and photo. Would you come to the center, Hillary? Who's going to hold this thing up? There we go.
Should go boy, girl, it's a girl.
Oh, the pattern. Good to see you again.
And you folks should know that the backup is, every bit is important, as the presentation. Because in cop work, the backup made the difference of it being successful or not.
Thank you. But wait, there's more. Another presentation, a proclamation on Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And we have Shelley Slaughter here. Yay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and I am here today wearing blue, along with all of you. Thank you to everyone who is wearing blue in recognition of our commitment to end child abuse and neglect here in Thurston County. At this time, I would like to invite some of my fellow partners in the county, as well as community members, to come and join me and share some information about their efforts to end child abuse and neglect in our community, and share a little bit more about this very important month. So, Prosecutor John Toonheim is here, along with some of his staff, here in the front here. I don't know if the camera can see. Our wonderful guests here, Astro and Marshall, that provide great comfort and therapy to children and their families who have experienced physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, or neglect. So, at this time, I'll pass it to John to see if he has any additional words to share, followed by Liz Davis, who is the Division Director of our Child, Family, and Community Wellness Division.
Sorry. Marshall's fine.
They've made themselves at home. They're comfortable.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here to help present this proclamation. When I was a deputy prosecutor, I spent about 10 years of my career with a caseload focused on child abuse and neglect cases. It was, so to speak, an emphasis of my practice, and I personally worked with many, many, many children who have been victims of abuse and neglect. In this county, about 20 years ago now, a conversation started around putting together a program to better address child abuse and neglect in this county, based on a model called a Child Advocacy Center. And several of us formed a task force to go to work on creating such a center, and I'm proud to say now that Monarch Children's Justice and Advocacy Center really stands as a leader in this community and, frankly, in the state in our efforts to address child abuse and neglect. And what this center does is it brings together professionals from all of the various disciplines that work on these cases, and creates a collaborative, co-located environment for all of these professionals to work on, and that's- And that's been existence now for over a decade. I feel like Thurston County is well situated to move forward on this issue, but we certainly continue, we need to continue this conversation. We know that abuse and neglect by children now, the research tells us it has significant adverse impacts on these children beyond just the abuse that they suffer, going well into later in their life, in terms of adverse health outcomes, criminal justice outcomes, social service outcomes, across the board. And one of the new bodies of research that, of course, I'm very interested in is the fact that child abuse and neglect robs kids of their hope. And that's actually been documented in studies now, that kids who experience this are much likely to be hopeless. And so all that we can do to continue to prevent child abuse, to hold those who commit these crimes accountable, and also to support victims, a voice that I feel is sometimes getting lost in our criminal justice conversations, to support these victims so that they can not just overcome the abuse, but go on to flourish in their lives. We need to do everything we can as a community, and I'm proud to be here to present this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. Liz Davis, Child, Family, and Community Wellness at Public Health. About seventeen years ago, I joined a women's volunteer organization in this community called the Junior League of Olympia, whose focus area is the prevention of child abuse and neglect. And through that organization, I actually met Prosecutor Toonheim, who was one of the first people to introduce me to the term adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. And I know some of you, over the years, have heard me talking a lot about this, and you will continue to. Adverse childhood experiences are defined as childhood, things that are detrimental to growth and brain development, things like abuse, neglect, also family challenges like substance use disorder, mental health issues, incarceration, domestic violence in the home, and even loss of a parent through death, divorce, or abandonment. When things like that are happening in a child's life over time, that raises stress levels in their bodies, like cortisol, which then impedes brain development, impedes the ability of certain regions of the brain to grow seeds that would later flourish and help them to thrive later in life, and can be a major impact on physical, mental, and behavioral challenges later in life. And we know that we need a multi-generational approach in order to address adverse childhood experiences and to prevent abuse and neglect. That means both prevention and intervention. That means not villainizing parents who, through, oftentimes through no choice of their own, experienced a lot of these same experiences when they were little, but to help them be the kind of parents that they want to be. We believe in building protective factors around kids and families in our community, things like parental resilience, how do we help parents bounce back when bad things happen in their lives? How can we provide concrete supports for families in times of need? If they need food, or housing, or any kind of basic needs support, how do we wrap around them as a community and help them to provide that so that they can provide for their children? Helping parents have knowledge of parenting and child development, which includes an understanding of proper discipline, and what they can expect about their child's development. Helping kids become socially and emotionally competent as they grow. And also for both parents and children and youth to help with those social connections that enable kids to grow healthfully, that enable parents to have someone to rely on, to provide respite. We know that that's extremely important. Science tells us this. The Nurse Family Partnership Program, which we often tout to you at Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, is a perfect example of how to provide these preventative activities while also providing some early intervention with high-risk parents. And we have a variety of our nurses and NFP staff here today, including baby Abigail, who is her mom. Lori Montoya is one of our NFP nurses, and this week is her second week on the job, right? As our second infant at work, so we're very glad to have her here and see that the kind of policies that do support healthy parenting are taking place in the county. The information that we have in terms of both science and in terms of local data, for example, we know that a full third of Thurston County adults have experienced three or more of those adverse childhood experiences before the age of eighteen. Being able to use that information to inform our policies, to inform our practices, will help us get to the place where we want to be. It's going to help us create a virtuous cycle instead of a vicious cycle, and to ensure a brighter future, not only for kids, but also for parents for generations to come. And I'm going to ask Gretchen Toller real quick to just talk a little bit about the pinwheel that you have on your desk, because she was part of planting those this weekend.
No, I'm a dog lover. I love them. Hi, nice to see you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. So on Sunday, so it's the last day of March. Every year, they do pinwheels for prevention placement at the Capitol Building, and we were, nice to see those. So we were one of many organizations that was out planting pinwheels, along with Department of Children, Youth, and Families, Family Education Support Services, many, many organizations. And if you get the opportunity to drive up Capitol Boulevard, you'll see all of those pinwheels. The pinwheels are a symbolic, I'm trying to remember the wording, whimsical symbol of childhood, to remind us about the importance of prevention and also awareness of child abuse. So it was a great opportunity and a nice, nice time to see everybody out there with its full support.
Question, comment?
Thank you.
Well, you've all heard me say this before, but, you know, kids are thirty percent of our population, but they're a hundred percent of our future, and we better get it right, because a lot depends on it.
You know, I had a constituent several months ago who commented and opined on the having your infant at work program that we, the policy we instituted last year. And so this is former government, this is not what we need, and we're not turning the place into, we shouldn't be turning it into a daycare center and all that. And I supported it, and so when I hear what Liz said, is that whenever I hear of a policy or I'm looking at policy, my first question always is, is this a proper function of government? And to support a healthy family, absolutely. It's our job, especially when the families need it, because they don't have the tools or resources available to them. So yes, I fully support it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners. So again, we are all here, all of us that are working together in our county and community to keep kids safe and protected, to ask you to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Thurston County, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the care, well-being, and protection of our children. And this supports your strategic plan, Initiative One, Improve Health Outcomes for All, which specifically, one of those strategies within that initiative is to reduce adverse childhood experiences here in Thurston County.
Thank you. We have a proclamation ready right now.
Yes, I think we have a proclamation here. Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas children are the foundation of a prosperous and innovative society, and the foundation for a child's growth and development is established when every community takes responsibility for creating healthy environments where our children can thrive. And whereas Thurston County supports the strengthening of family protective factors that reduce abuse and neglect through promoting social connections, knowledge of parenting and child development, parental resilience, concrete supports in times of need, and the social and emotional competence of children. And whereas, a child's early experiences of being nurtured and developing a bond with consistent, caring adults affect all aspects of behavior and development, and is associated with better academic grades, healthier choices, improved physical and mental health, positive peer interactions, and an increased ability to cope with stress. And whereas, the child abuse rate for Thurston County has increased since 2010, and one in four county high school-age youth have experienced physical child abuse. And whereas Thurston County recognizes it is the responsibility of every adult to protect children from all forms of adverse childhood experiences, including abuse and neglect, and recognizes the need for adults, organizations, schools, and communities to form protective barriers around children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention programs are essential and succeed because of community partnerships created among citizens, social service agencies, schools, businesses, law enforcement agencies, faith-based organizations, civic organizations, and other child-serving agencies. And whereas, April 5th, 2019, is Go to Blue Day, a day when everyone is encouraged to wear blue, to build awareness about child abuse and neglect prevention, and to inspire change by focusing on community activities and public policies that prioritize prevention. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Thurston County, and urges all citizens to actively participate in the care, well-being, and protection of our children. Adopted this second day of April, 2019, your Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Now we have a presentation to present, proclamation rather, and then pictures.
Would everybody please come up for a photo and to receive the proclamation and be recognized for your work in preventing child abuse?
You better get in the middle here. You guys get in the middle, I'll be on the edge. I'll back you up. Sure. It's not a good picture until you have something, you know. See, that's how, oh, dog got it.
I'll give the dogs.
One, two, three.
Sure. Yeah. County badge on it, yeah.
Oh, yippee, we have another proclamation.
Two more.
National Public Health Week. Shelley.
Yes, good afternoon again. Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And it is my great honor to be here to ask you, as Board of County Commissioners, to proclaim April 1st through 7th this week as National Public Health Week 2019 in Thurston County, and urge all residents to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, better understand the value of public health, and supporting opportunities to adopt preventative lifestyle habits in light of this year's national theme, creating the healthiest nation, for science, for action, and for health. Everyone deserves to live a long and healthy life in a safe environment. To make that possible, we need to address the causes of poor health and disease risk among individuals and within our communities. Where we live, learn, work, and play affects each of us and can determine our health and life expectancy. As you may know, most recently Thurston County moved up to be rank number five in the state of Washington, as the fifth healthiest county in the state of Washington for health outcomes. And we are very fortunate that we are a healthy community, but there are many other things that we can do to improve the health of our citizens for generations to come. Within our communities, we need to start conversations with our neighbors and become advocates for positive change. Working together, we can build healthier communities and eventually be part of the healthiest nation. I'll also note that Thurston County was named in the top five percent of healthiest counties and cities in our nation as well. So during each day of National Public Health Week, we focus on a particular health topic. And you may see some of these on our Instagram, on our Facebook, on our website, or just listening to others in your community talk about how we can be better public health advocates, and how we can be responsible for improving our, our own health. So this week, Monday, was Healthy Communities. Today, Tuesday, I think is very notable that it is violence prevention. So in light of the other proclamation that you just, that you just awarded, I think that the connection between violence prevention and public health and how that impacts our communities and our kids is very important. On Wednesday this week is Rural Health. On Thursday, we'll be promoting technology in public health. And on Friday, climate change. While Saturday and Sunday, we'll be focusing on global health. Health must be a priority in designing our communities, and this is from healthy housing to parks to playgrounds. Education is a leading indicator of good health, giving people access to better jobs, incomes, and neighborhoods. Poverty and poor health go hand in hand. We have great inequities in our community to address, even with our health ranking of being number five. We have a commitment to health equity. We need to ensure that our food system can provide affordable, nutritious, and safe food. What happens upstream in our environment affects our health downstream. We need to support policies that protect the air we breathe, both indoors and outdoors, and the clean water that we drink, and continue to advocate for supporting our efforts in working together to address climate change and the impacts in our community. We focus on prevention and encourage people to make healthy choices, avoiding using tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs, to eat healthy foods and exercise, and ensure that everyone has access to quality health care. We also need a strong public health infrastructure, and I'm very happy that we have an amazing workforce here in Thurston County through our Department of Public Health and Social Services, of over a hundred employees that work tirelessly every day in our community to make an impact on improving the health. And for my fellow public health colleagues here in the room, I would like you to join me in receiving this proclamation. So again, thank you very much for your support and advocacy of public health, for recognizing this very important week, as well as National Global Health Month. And this proclamation supports several initiatives in your strategic plan, including Initiative One, Improve Health Outcomes for All, Initiative Two, Improving Community Health, Wellness, and Safety, and Initiative Nine, Supporting Environmental Health and Climate Stabilization, among many other things. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything?
Shelley, are there, you mentioned different focus days. Are there associated activities, or what is that? Is it just sort of giving attention?
Yes, we are raising awareness and through our different social media outlets, getting information out to the public on things that they can do to engage in activities that will help improve their health and well-being. And within our department, we're celebrating different things to honor our, our public health employees.
We have a proclamation.
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
And we're probably going to discuss a different way of doing business in the future when we've done these five. Anyway, National Public Health Week. Whereas the week of April 1st through 7th, 2019, is National Public Health Week, and the theme for 2019 is creating the healthiest nation, for science, for action, for health. And whereas, public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease outbreaks such as measles and foodborne illnesses, climate change, and natural disasters. And whereas public health action, together with scientific and technological advances, has played a major role in reducing the spread of infectious diseases, and in establishing today's ability to monitor and prevent disease, whether this be by working with local healthcare providers or drinking water systems. And whereas U.S. life expectancy has decreased in recent years with the drop that represents the longest sustained decline in expected lifespan since the Great Recession, residents of Thurston County are experiencing differences in how long they live depending on their gender, race, and ethnicity. An infant mortality rate is too high, whereas 60% of people in the United States live with a chronic disease such as cancer, heart disease, or diabetes, which can be prevented in part by avoiding tobacco use, being physically active, eating well, and avoiding excessive alcohol use. And whereas there is a difference in the health and well-being of people living in rural places compared to people living in urban areas, in part because rural residents are more likely to experience transportation barriers, lack of access to services, and lack of economic opportunity, which negatively impacts health. And whereas since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health and the impact public health professionals make through both prevention and preventive actions, activities. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 1st through 7th as National Public Health Week 2019 in Thurston County, and urges all residents to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and supporting opportunities to adopt preventive lifestyle habits in light of this year's theme, creating the healthiest nation for science, for action, for health. Adopted this second day of April 2019. Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
And Shelley, who's coming up with you?
Yes, any public health employee, please come up for a photo. And thank you so much to all of our public health employees that could not be here today because they are doing the good work of public health out in our county and community right now. So thank you.
And Shelley? Do you get all these things too? It's just the cumulative, not this one, but cumulatively. And batting cleanup, we have one final one, and that is proclamation, National County Government Month, and County Manager Romero Chavez is going to brief.
Thank you, last but not least. All 39 counties in Washington State serves over 7 million residents where we provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. Counties provide health services, as you heard from your Director of Public Health and Social Services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. The Washington State Association of Counties, as well as the National Association of Counties across the nation, in all the counties as well, will be demonstrating how counties deliver services to our residents nationwide. This proclamation before you serves as an opportunity to raise awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services, and also is an opportunity to say thank you to all the county employees on a daily basis. They make a difference to our citizens. And to accept this proclamation is one of your own. Linda Labanida-Bomar, who is going to be here to accept the proclamation on the county's behalf.
All right, any comments about this proclamation?
No. Do we get to quiz Labanida or what?
Yeah, go ahead and quiz her. Yeah, we'll get away to read it, read it.
Okay.
It's all read.
We make light of this, but it is important, and I don't know if we didn't laugh once in a while. This is so serious, sometimes it'd make you cry, to be honest with you, if you knew what went on here. National County Government Month. Whereas in Washington State, 39 counties serving more than 7 million residents provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Thurston County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, safety, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas through the Washington State Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties across the nation, counties will be demonstrating how counties deliver services to our residents nationwide. And whereas each year since 1991, the Washington State Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the state to evaluate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Thurston County Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2019 as National County Government Month. Adopted this second day of April 2019. Your Board of County Commissioners.
There we go. Thank you.
Picture, picture.
Who better to receive this than the clerk of the board? Labanida-Bomar, let's find out and get a picture. Thank you for your patience. So now we're at the point of the agenda for the opportunity for the public to address the Board of County Commissioners, and a couple rules for engagement. We ask to be sure your phones are silenced. Also, we ask you that you be very respectful and no jeering and clapping and booing. And you will be, each participant is limited to three minutes to public comment, and Labanida-Bomar will time you, the timer is up on the wall, you can kind of keep track of how much time you have left. And at the end of that, you'll hear a ping, and then time is up. But if you're mid-sentence, of course, finish. Your time may not be donated to another person, and again, we ask that you be very respectful, but also be mindful that this is a time for the public to address the board, not for us to engage in question, answer, debate, conversation. We just sit to listen, and then if something is brought to our attention that needs follow-up, the county manager will follow up, or staff will follow up, and we'll report back the following week. So I will read your name. Please come up, and when you're called, and give us your name for the record, and about where you live in the county, and you'll be off and running. So first, we have Michael Steadman.
Thank you, Commissioners and County Manager. I'm Michael Steadman. I live in northeast Lacey. I'm a city council member in Lacey as well, as a local business owner in the county, and I serve as your chair on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Last month, I briefed you with some concerns that we had with the committee, and subsequently we got a letter in return from you, and this is to readdress that with the concerns that we still share. Solid Waste Advisory Committee has been briefed regarding solid, or the SWAC has never been briefed regarding the solid waste RFP process. SWAC should not manage or process, however, we do have a role that is clearly spelled out in RCWs to advise, review, and comment. In the last briefing with the commission late last year regarding the possible RFP, the Calis landfill was not mentioned or discussed. The process in Calis County has not stopped, it's only been delayed till June 2021. Calis County has given their staff until June 2021 to correct the management problems that exist at the landfill. It'll be difficult for them to correct those problems because they don't have the expertise or the access to the solid waste stream necessary to make the landfill work correctly. If given the opportunity to advise, review, and comment, we would have communicated to staff and the commissioners that there is no hurry to go through procurement process for a long-term contract when there are significant long-term changes happening in the solid waste system in western Washington. If the county signs a 10-year agreement to manage our solid waste system that starts in 2020, and a different company takes over the Calis landfill in 2021, we'd be stuck with inflated rates for nearly a decade or longer, depending on the term of contract. This is the first week of April, and to conduct an RFP, negotiate a new contract, and have a company ramp up operations by May of next year would be a monumental challenge, to say the least. The county is out of time to conduct an extensive and thorough RFP process. Staff indicated that the pricing for transportation disposal rates that we included in the letter were not relevant. Thurston County charged by our partners at the transfer station just over $72 a ton for current contract, so the transportation disposal rates make up 76% of that rate. Calis would provide significant savings to the transportation costs, which made Calis and our current rates very relevant. The county process should not stop, however, it should be delayed till 2025 or even 2023 to see what happens with Calis. Status quo until 2025 or '23 is a good thing for our constituents. At this time, there is no business case to move forward with this RFP process you're currently in, however, just the opposite. It is truly a good business case to pause the process and see what happens in Calis. Thank you for your time, Commissioners, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Michael. Boy, look at that, you had three seconds left.
Well, last time I had needed 30 more seconds, so I tried to, but yeah, appreciate everything you guys do, and giving me an opportunity for comment, a public comment, because it's very important that, you know, trying to save taxpayers' money, which are the taxpayers and voters and all that, so appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Michelle, come on up.
Hello again, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Hawkins-Brigham. I live on 128th Avenue Southeast, Yelm, Washington. Just happens to be the same street as the bio solids application. So I think you can imagine my husband and I have as much passion about this issue on our street as we did about the marijuana ordinance, which is still a menace to our community. In fact, in the last two weeks, I've called 911 twice. And it's interesting, the proclamations we've been talking about today, because the problem is underage children that I've watched working, cultivating the marijuana, now using unsupervised powerful weapons, guns, right next to our property line. So the menace continues, toxic garbage and a lot of other things, but I'm here today to talk about the bio solids, and I have a prepared statement, the bio solids application. Please amend the official docket for Title 24 revisions in this current cycle to include the four brief sections about bio solids from the 2012 code revision, a memorandum of understanding that does not exist, and is not a memorandum of understanding that does not exist, is not transparent government. The Nisqually Valley News article from last week contained speculation that the 2012 MOU had expired. In his comments to this board on March 12th, Mr. Wright, who's here today, provided you with copies of the answers he received from the county and from DOE in response to his public records requests to produce the MOU referred to in the 2012 code revision. No expired memorandum of understanding was produced. No record was produced. This suggests there never was an MOU. If there had been one that had expired at some point, that record would have been produced. This board has the authority under the Growth Management Act to amend the docket in order to start the process to revise the code. Please exercise legislative authority. Thank you, I'm sure I'll be back.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, do you have prepared remarks you want to deliver to the staff?
I don't have a copy. I can provide copies, doesn't have my name.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have, I have Bob Brown on here, but it doesn't indicate whether Mr. Brown wants to speak or not, so, and no one's rising. Okay, so we'll move on. Next, I have Mike Wright. How you doing, sir?
Very well, thank you. My name is Mike Wright, I live out in Bald Hills. This is a fine week and a fine month, given the proclamations that preceded us and their support of your various strategic initiatives. In last week's update to the Commissioners about Title 24 and the bio solids applications in the county's critical areas, Mr. Chavez referred to the RCW 43 and 7095, and I want to thank Mr. Chavez and staff for the work that they've been doing these previous two weeks since I was here on March 12th, gathering the background information. Mr. Chavez also let you know, he spoke with Ecology, and they declined to delegate any authority, do not wish to do so. And finally, Mr. Chavez said that he would check in with your legislative delegation to see about changing the laws. The citations to the RCWs provided by Mr. Chavez are useful background information, and the fact that Ecology doesn't really want to delegate anything is useful. That suggests that they agree the code should be changed. My point is about amending the code in accordance with your existing Growth Management Act mandated authority. The matter at hand is to get the Board of County Commissioners to vote to amend the official docket to include the four additional sections in Title 24 in this current cycle. The docketing process is mandated by the Growth Management Act. It's the only way to lawfully open the door to discuss any changes, any recommendations from me or DOE, and any perspectives about how the code should be changed going forward. The code sections about bio solids updated in 2012 cite what appears to be a non-existent memorandum of understanding from roughly seven years ago. One would think that in 2012, it would have been current going forward, so it would have been more recently expired if it had been found. I don't know the exact number of years for archiving for a memorandum of understanding, but nothing was produced. The fact that the public records request produced no such document indicates that the code does need to be changed, and that doesn't seem to be any disagreement about that, only about how it should be changed. You don't need permission from Ecology. You already have your legislative authority to amend the docket at any time in the cycle from the Growth Management Act. DOE can then participate in the discussions about how it should be changed. You don't need advice from your legislative delegation, you already have authority. We're not asking you to change the RCWs in the other chapters that have been cited. They may become relevant once the docket is amended. The GMA mandates that revising the code in accordance with statute, case law, and the best available science. Please do so.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
That exhausts the list. Now I'm going to ask the audience, anybody in the gallery, would you like to address, if anybody wants to address the Board of County Commissioners, please come on up, right to the occasion, anyone? No? Okay, good. Thank you. What we're going to do now is we're going to take a recess, it's 3:08, then we're going to move right into a public hearing, and then we'll reconvene the BOCC meeting right after the public hearing. So, public hearing. This public hearing is to consider changes to Thurston County Code 13.56.310 subsection A regarding landscaping and vegetation management. The purpose of the hearing is to receive public testimony on a proposal to change this code. This portion of the code requires any person, including public works, to obtain approval from the Board of County Commissioners before trimming or removing trees within the rights of way designated as sensitive areas of interest. The proposed changes would exempt public works from the requirement in Thurston County Code cited. In addition, the proposed changes would delegate the responsibility of approving removal of trees and... of trees and trimming of trees proposed by others. It would be moved to have the county manager so delegated to do that. There's a sign-up sheet in the back of the room, and you can add your name if you wish to testify. And if you want to testify, you'll have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out the names of oral testimony. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be donated to another person. And Labanita Bomar has the controls for the timer, had before. And now, this public hearing is now open. I may ask Scott Lindblum to come up and frame this for us, please, the issue. Thank you, Scott.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Scott Lindblum. I'm the county engineer with Public Works. And the item before you at the public hearing today, you actually addressed it quite well. It's to address an issue in the code that inhibits Public Works' ability to be responsive when there are hazard trees or danger trees within several sections of county roads. Right now, if we are trying to be responsive for a hazard tree or danger tree... Is the microphone on here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. If we are trying to be responsive to a hazard tree or danger tree that might affect the safety of the traveling public, we are required by code to seek County Commissioner approval prior to trimming or removing said trees. Now, there's eight different areas that this is affecting us in our ability to be responsive. The first section is the entire section of the Thurston County Bonifat Byway within the unincorporated county. That's about 60 miles of roadway. Also, the intersection of 8th Avenue Northeast and South Bay Road Northeast. Cedars adjacent to Rich Road near Chambers Creek. The entire length of McKenzie Road. Twin Douglas fir trees on Delphi Road just east of the bridge, east of McKenzie Road. Oak and Douglas fir trees west of Delphi Road, just southerly of the entrance to Camelot Subdivision. An oak tree at the northeast corner of Delphi Road and Kenny Road intersection. And finally, Fadling Road from McKenzie Road westerly. So our request for you today is to consider, or to take public comment, and then consider striking the requirement for Public Works to be seeking County Commissioner approval. And really, the approach there would be to allow us to be responsive to meet the needs of the public road system and make sure roads stay safe.
All right, thank you.
Any questions you have?
Any questions?
That inventory of trees that you just went through?
Yes.
What was that, what was that list represent?
Those are the sensitive areas that are included in that section of the county code. And so that language is actually cut right from the code, so that's the specificity that the code now includes.
So those are the only areas subject to this authority?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything?
I can only imagine this will help expedite good county government.
Yeah.
That's the intent, certainly.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Scott. Nobody has signed up, but I'm going to ask anybody if they would like to address the Board on this issue. Please come forward, anyone? No one? And that's it? Okay. So a motion to close this public hearing?
Yes, I've moved to close this public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. And what is the pleasure of the Board?
I would like to move to approve an ordinance amending Thurston County Code 13.56.310 sub-A regarding landscaping and vegetation management.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. And that's done now. Now, we're going to reconvene the BOCC. And where we left off on the agenda is item number two, as the county managers update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just a couple of updates for you in this related to public testimony. I'm glad that Mr. Wright had the opportunity to listen, the conversation that you had related to his previous request on amending the docket. So we'll take his testimony as well as the other testimony you receive related to the bio-solids and see what else we need to respond. Also, last week, you received additional testimony from Mr. John Pettit related to the Henderson septic area. And I will encourage Mr. Pettit, he is listening to this conversation, to watch the video recording of the agenda setting of today, which is April the 2nd, 2019, between just about 10:30 in the morning to 11:15, where you had a good conversation with staff from Public Health, as well as prosecutor and attorney representing that department, where there was a lot of good conversation related to how these arrest charges were implemented. And so how the Henderson area was implemented to begin with. Again, that will be a way as to how we could address some of Mr. Pettit's comments. Also, you received some power of testimony from Mr. Carmen last week. I will bring this item to your attention next Tuesday morning. Some of the highlights of last week, you had a Commissioners' check-in on Thursday, March 28th, where you had an executive session where you review potential applications for the Human Resources Director position. Also, on March 29, you went to the Public Works campus where you had a day-long planning session. And you have many items that you discussed, including the 2019 Pocket Gopher interim review process, the Development Code docket, the Board of Health membership, the homeless emergency letter to the Governor. You discussed the sidewalk organizations and the financial situation. You also discussed the Flex Unit project in association with expanding the existing jail. You also heard some options related to reorganization proposals. You had a budget overview, and also you had a conversation related to the Citizens Budget Advisory Group. And you also had a couple of items among yourselves that you discussed as well. It was a very long, but productive day, at least from my perspective, and I hope it was productive for you as well. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. Any questions with the county manager?
No, sir.
No.
All right. Now, everybody, Agenda Three, the consent items A, B, and C.
I would like to move to accept consent items A through C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda, the consent items A, B, and C. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. Agenda item number four, Public Health and Social Services adopt an ordinance amending a chapter pertaining to the Treatment Sales Tax. And we have Shelley Slaughter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Shelley Slaughter, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services and Administrator of the Treatment Sales Tax Program. So we are here to ask for you to adopt a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 5.49 of the Thurston County Code pertaining to the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee. The Thurston... This code includes language related to the responsibilities and membership of the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee, which makes non-binding recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners regarding the use of Treatment Sales Tax funds, which support mental health and chemical dependency treatment programs. The current code indicates that the Board of County Commissioners shall appoint seven members to the advisory committee. The proposed change would allow the Board of County Commissioners to appoint no fewer than seven and no more than nine members, which is intended to bring a broader range of expertise to the committee, ensure a larger group of committee members is present at meetings, and allow flexibility in the event of committee member turnover. In addition, the proposed change to this code would make minor edits related to the frequency with which the advisory committee makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. Current code language states that recommendations will be made each year. This language was adopted before Thurston County moved to a biennial budget process. So this proposed change would indicate that recommendations will be made regularly. A public hearing was held last week on March 26, 2019, to receive public testimony regarding the proposal. No public testimony was received at that hearing or prior to that hearing in writing. The Treatment Sales Tax supports the following Thurston County Strategic Plan initiatives: Initiative 2, Improve Community Health Wellness and Safety; and Initiative 11, Design and Deliver Innovative Services Through Continued Justice System Reform to Maximize Community Safety, Rehabilitation, Accountability, and Cost Effectiveness.
End it?
That is it.
Questions or comments?
No. No, the only thing I would say about this is we've been working on this in work sessions for the last several work sessions, and that's how come we're not having a lot of discussion at it right now, just to inform the public of that.
Good, thank you for that clarification. And is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 5.49 of the Thurston County Code pertaining to the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Agenda item number six, CPED, Community Planning and Economic Development Resolution of Critical Areas Regulations and the Comprehensive Plan Update. Allison, there you are.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Allison Osterberg, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. And I'm here today to request the Board approve a resolution acknowledging and finding that the Thurston County Critical Areas Ordinance meets the current requirements for counties to have protections for critical areas in their development codes, and it's a requirement that's under the Growth Management Act. And as a little bit of context for why we're bringing this forward to you today, as you know, the county is currently in the process of completing its periodic update to its comprehensive plan under the Growth Management rules. And back in February of 2017, the Board of County Commissioners approved a scope of work for the comprehensive plan update. At that time, staff had, as part of developing that scope of work, staff reviewed the criteria and the checklist that the Department of Commerce puts out about what should be included in the comprehensive plan update. And one of the items that they require are certain updates to critical area protections in your development codes. Staff had reviewed our critical area protections, which were put in place in 2012 with some small amendments since then, and felt that those meet the current standards and identified in the scope of work that no further amendments to the critical area ordinance would be needed as part of the scope of work for the comprehensive plan. And the Board approved that scope of work in February of 2017. Since that time, the schedule that we had for the comp plan update was to complete that update in December of 2018. Because of various delays and things that have needed more time for review, that timeline has been extended, and we're looking at adopting this year. We have another briefing with the Board on the comp plan update coming up later this month, to talk more about that. But because the timeline for the periodic update is extending longer, we are looking to bring this resolution today for the Board to take a formal action acknowledging that we have critical area protections that meet the requirements of our 2016 periodic update standards, and that no further updates will be needed under that. And that is to show that the county is in compliance with the requirements under the Growth Management Act for critical area protections in our development code. Any questions?
Questions?
We, again, we've had discussions over this for a period of time, so we've had work sessions. I would ask, are we going to have you appearing in front of the Board of County Commissioners anytime in the future, at future meetings?
Do you mean at official Tuesday meetings? Or, I'm not, well, I'm not sure, but we certainly do have several briefings where I'll be working with the Board of County Commissioners over the next month.
Okay, well, I was just kind of headed down that road of thanking you for your service here at Thurston County, and I know you're contemplating changes. I didn't know when the timing was going to take place on that, but...
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you.
Yes, even though I am looking to move into a new position with Thurston Regional Planning Council, I anticipate that I'll continue to work very closely with the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
And will be very pleased to do so. I would just note that this resolution is consistent with Initiative Number Seven of the Thurston County Strategic Plan, Balancing Development with the Preservation of the County's Rural Character, Natural Areas, and Open Spaces.
I just might add that I am exceedingly happy for you, Allison, but I'm very, very sad, because you're very valuable to the organization.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchings.
Anything?
As the representative of the Board on TRPC, I'll try to wring as much work out of her as I can, benefit Thurston County.
Yeah, we count on it. All right.
Okay. I would move to approve a resolution finding that the Thurston County Critical Areas Ordinance, Title 24 of the Thurston County Code, meets the current requirements of the Growth Management Act to have development regulations in place to protect critical areas. And that no amendments to the Critical Areas Ordinance are needed as part of the scope of work for the periodic update to the comprehensive plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number six, Commissioners and County Managers' items, set a public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioners. This particular item is related to the courthouse and administrative services building. So let me give you a little bit of a background related to this matter. Thurston County Government and the courts includes buildings one through six. That's what we call the courthouse campus up here in the hill. Buildings one and three, which compose the main buildings of the campus, were constructed in 1978, as we consider to be the original complex. Over the last 40 years, the county has purchased buildings four, five, and six, which are located across the street. The existing buildings for county government and the courts and their current estate are at the end of their useful life, costing significant taxpayers dollars to maintain and operate. The current layout and design also makes it difficult for citizens to locate county resources, services, in a timely manner. As you can attest, parking is an issue here at the courthouse. In 2015, as well as in 2018, Thurston County conducted courthouse renovations or replacement comparative feasibility studies for the purpose of providing the county with a long-term solution to housing courts and other county administrative functions in an efficient, cost-efficient matter. The last study in 2018, at the direction of the county, conducted further analysis on the following three sites. One was the existing Hilltop site here in Thurston County for the courts and administrative services building. Number two was the Plum Street, which is formerly, the side where it's formerly the Olympia City Hall and is currently the location of the City of Olympia Creighton Justice Center. And the third site was the Harrison West, which is currently undeveloped on the west side of Olympia. I may note, all the county administrative buildings in the courthouse has to be located within the county seat, in this case, is within the boundaries of the City of Olympia. The Board of County Commissioners reviewed the 2015 and 18 feasibility studies and determined it would be in the best interest to relocate and construct a new courthouse and county government buildings at the Plum Street site. RCW 84.55.050 provides for the levy of regular property taxes in an amount exceeding the limitations specified under Chapter 84.55 or the revised Code of Washington. And such increased levy is authorized by a ballot proposition approved by the majority of the voters in an election held within the taxing district. And this is as means to fund this new courthouse and regional administrative building. The proposal before you today is for you to consider setting a public hearing, for you to take public testimony on ordinance relating to regular property tax providing for the submission to the qualified voters, electors, on either, on an special election to be held August 6, 2019, or November 5, 2019, or February 11, 2020. or November 5th, 2019, or February 11th, 2020.
Questions? This is about setting a public hearing. Any questions?
And this is all about public input as to when or if we would have an election?
Yeah, this is for you to receive public testimony as to, for you to consider putting before the voters a ballot measure where they may support or not funding this new courthouse and regional administrative center buildings.
But at this point, it doesn't lock us into anything.
No.
So we can get the input from the citizens of Thurston County.
Yeah, and on April 23rd, which is the proposed date for you to receive public testimony. At that point, you receive public testimony, I will schedule a follow-up meeting where you have a conversation based on the public testimony you have received. And also, then I will bring a matter for you to make a decision in early May. And that way, you will have the opportunity, whether you have, you decide to put it on the August 2019 special election, the first week in May is the deadline at which you may need to take an action. But also, you have the ability to put in any of the elections dates that I just mentioned.
Or, I mean, a lot of options are not locked in.
Or you can say, here where we stopped. I mean, all the options are available to you.
But we want to open this up to public input.
From the do-nothing to take it to the voters, yes.
So the only lock-in that we have is a public hearing on the 23rd of April.
Yep.
But we can unlock that if we wanted to.
That's the proposal before you.
Okay.
Yep.
Are we good to go?
Yep.
I would move to set a public hearing for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019, at 5:30 PM at the Thurston County Courthouse, Building 1, Room 280, to consider public testimony on an ordinance relating to regular property taxes providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the county at a special election to be held on either August 6th, 2019, November 5th, 2019, or February 11th, 2020, of a proposition authorizing the county to levy regular property taxes in excess of the limitations of Chapter 84.55, RCW, and setting forth the text of the ballot proposition for the purpose of constructing a new courthouse and regional administrative building.
Second, Tom.
So it's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing relating to the levy of irregular property taxes. All in favor, is any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Now we get down to Commissioners' items, and I'll turn to my seatmates and see if they have anything to report from last week. And I'll start with Commissioner Enser.
Thank you. So, going back to Thursday, I attended the, missed some of the board sessions that were happening because I was at the Puget Sound Partnership Salmon Recovery Council in Kingston. We had a bunch of presentations that were interesting. One from the Skokomish tribe about some of the challenges they're facing on the Skokomish, on the river, based on hatchery fish and their life cycle of when they spawn versus flows, and trying to match, those aren't really matching up very well, so it's creating real challenges. But a big part of the discussion was, since we're in the middle of legislative session, was about salmon recovery dollars in general. The estimation is that about 16, the amount of funding that's coming in toward Puget Sound restoration is about 16% of what's necessary. And despite our governor's, you know, environmental agenda, it's not going in sufficient quantity to the issue of salmon recovery. And the council urges, and I support this, and I urge the public to let your legislators know that this issue is important to you, your family, our region, for all the variety of reasons that, you know, we don't have time to get into here. But the legislature needs to hear. There are so many competing priorities right now with homeless and affordable housing, with mental health issues, with, you know, schools issues. And there's a lot of important issues. But if salmon recovery is an issue, and Puget Sound restoration is an issue that you care about, a priority for you, the funding is not there. And as David Trout put it, "The budget that's on the table right now is a budget for extinction." It was the quote that I wrote down in my notes, because it's pretty stark. So I would encourage folks to reach out if it means something to them. That night, I attended the Sidewalk Gala at Puget Sound Community College. It was an unusual fundraiser, and I enjoyed it. There was some stand-up comedy, some rapping, and by staff members that did a really good job. So it was enjoyable. I attended, with my seatmates, the Fair Foundation fundraiser on Saturday. I attended the Blintze Palooza, which is a fundraiser for different groups this year. It's Zonta, South Sound Reading, and, shoot, there's three. But it was a huge event. Stood in the beautiful sun for about 45 minutes to wait for blintzes, and my daughter and I really enjoyed that. On Monday, I had a chance to tour the mitigation camp, the Tiny Home Village, and go to Salvation Army and see their shelter. And more excitingly, the facilities and plans they have for expansion, which is all funded and ready to go and will be completed by the end of the year. And there's three different projects, and they're all going to be done this year. So that's going to be huge. So I really appreciate those groups. Keely Marino, our homeless coordinator, and Colin of Olympia, helped me see those. Tiny Home Village was incredibly impressive. I would encourage anyone who hasn't seen it to take a look at what's going on there. And then, finally, yesterday was our opioid task force meeting at Public Health. And we're getting to the final stages of finalizing a plan that will come to before the Board of Health, I believe in June. So...
That's the schedule.
Anyway, that was my week.
My week consisted mostly of water quality issues and threatened or endangered species. And it mainly had a focus on the Nisqually River and developing strategy to see if we can't put a stop to the biosolid applications along the Nisqually River. That was meeting with citizens or strategizing with even legislators or others to come up with a plan to encourage ecology to revoke this biosolids potential permit that they're going to possibly issue. I hope they won't issue it. I would encourage that citizens out there would recognize that we've got threatened steelhead in the Nisqually River, and we have gophers on the prairie up there, the Mazama Pocket Gopher, where this application is going to take place. At least, we've got the soil conditions. But it doesn't seem like there's any requirement for that group that wants to make this application to do any type of inspection for pocket gophers when other citizens are restricted to only certain times of the year. We've got the steelhead in the Nisqually that we would think that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife folks would be very active about protecting, because that species is going to be completely gone, never to come back again in a short order if we don't do something about it. But yet, we're willing to continue to apply chemicals to our waterways, whether it's the headwaters and through fertilizer application in the forests, or they're spraying to kill eelgrass in the Puget Sound, and that's habitat for the small fish when they come out, to halfway upstream applying biosolids. And so I think that's going to take some time to continue this effort to slow down ecology from permitting and allowing this to take place. I like to think ecology is involved in protecting our environment, not degrading our environment. So that's kind of my week.
Wow. You guys sure did a lot of work last week, and I'm happy. Speaking of chemicals, I was off most of last week because I was down in Sacramento celebrating my mother's 101st birthday. And so, speaking of chemicals, it's so nice to toast my mom with a Bloody Mary. For many years in a row now. And six of us and nine kids or siblings got together and were able to be part of this function. And it was just, it was great fun, a lot of fun, a lot of memories. And this all happened inside of her own home. Because she owns her own home, she's still up and functioning and going really strong. So, and then, the only other thing I need to report or want to report is tonight is the League of Women Voters series, continuing series, Where's the Water? Stormwater and toxic runoff at the Olympia Center downtown, 222 Columbia Street Northwest. And that will be a good one to see as well. And that is all I have to report. So, county manager?
Thank you, commissioners. Let me walk you through your combined upcoming schedule for this week. And in this appointments where at least two commissioners will be present, you may have individual appointments on your individual calendars, and those will not be part of my report. Starting here at 5:00 in the afternoon, you have a public hearing where you receive public testimony related to a proposal to form a special youth district on Summit Lake. Tomorrow, 9:00 in the morning, you have a briefing related to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. At 11:15 tomorrow, Wednesday, April 3rd, you have the opportunity to welcome new county employees to county government. Thursday, April 4th, 9:30, you have a briefing related to the Thurston County Fair and Fairgrounds. You have the commissioners check-in at 10:00 in the morning, but that will be canceled. And Thursday, April 4th, in the afternoon, you have the Jail Population Crisis Action Team. That's a quarterly meeting where you have the opportunity to meet with all the partners on the law and justice system where they provide some of data related to the strategies they have implemented to improve the law and justice system as a whole. And at 3:30 in the afternoon, you have a briefing related to the Agri Tourism Committee. Nothing for the rest of the week, nothing on April 8th. And we'll come back here Tuesday, April 9th, to review the agenda for the April 9th Board of County Commissioners. That's all I have for you.
And thank you very much for that planning session last Friday. That was very, very good. Very good. All right, with that, is there any other business to conduct?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay, no more business to conduct. We are adjourned, done. We'll be back at 1700 or 5:00 PM for the public hearing.